All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have invocation. Madam Clerk, do we have? No. Okay, we'll have a moment of silent prayer for our invocation and then we will have the pledge of allegiance. After that, if you would, please stand with me.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 16th, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any members have any amendments?
Anyone have any amendments? All right, here and none?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add Resolution 2021-250, which is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners regarding the redistricting process in the Georgia General Assembly, to request certain standards in the redistricting process to authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documents and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This is being requested to add as an emergency item. Essentially, this is asking the General Assembly to, in short, be transparent and fair in its redistricting process, given that the special session will likely pass or be over by the time you all come back for your next meeting. I'm asking this to be added as an emergency. And a copy was provided to you all earlier.
And I requested that to be added, so I'll place that in form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
If I move in second, any questions? All right, those in favor, aye. And I'm adding it to the consent agenda. All right. Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. All right, therefore, here and none, is our motion to adopt the agenda. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next order of business is the Veteran of the Month.
All right, our Veteran of the Month, and this is Veterans Day month, so we recognize all of our veterans who serve our country so valiantly and continue to serve in different capacities. But our Veteran of the Month is Master Sergeant Retired Stanley L. Coleman. Stanley L. Coleman was born April 9th, 1955, entering the Army Reserve as a private first class. Stan completed basic training at Fort Leonard Wood and completed his initial training for journalism at Fort Harrison. Six years in Army Reserve and 20-plus years in the Army Air Force Reserve. His military experience included two short tours in the Middle East during Iraqi freedom and homeland service, two various base public affairs tours to aid in training, team leadership, and staff support in the public affairs career field. His achievements include guiding his team to achieve the Department of the Air Force Newspaper Award, second place in the 2005 Air Force Media Contest, deploy publication Desert Eagle for the 379th Air Expeditionary Wing for Exceptional Print Journalism in support of the Internal Information Program and the Air Force Mission. Mr. Coleman served at Dobbin's Air Force Base, developed his skills to achieve his first individual placement in the 1999 Air Force Reserve Command Media Contest for third place in the photojournalism category. His letter of commendation from Major General John J. Batby, Jr., 22nd Air Force Commander stated, and I quote, "I admire your talent in being able to tell the story with your words and give it deeper meaning with good photos. I am confident that you will continue to display these exemplary qualities in your work." End quote. Future assignments included a two-week assignment in Puerto Rico in support of the relief and support mission of the U.S. Air Force Reserve after the Haitian earthquake. Mr. Coleman backfilled as a senior NCO for various stateside duty stations for the Air Force during the war in the Middle East. On the day of the 9/11 attack, Mr. Coleman volunteered to report to Dobbin's Air Force Base during his work hours to assist with the public affairs mission and the Air Force Mission in ensuring no further attacks would be implemented. After his retirement from the Air Force Reserve, he kept his photojournalism skills alive through volunteering to conduct a senior program in photography training for five years. As a result, the Griswells Senior Center possessed a staff of photographers that document the daily, monthly, and special holiday events. Mr. Coleman has also served as a member of the Atlanta Chapter Tuskegee Airmen as a public relations team member and currently serves as the historian. The result of his efforts to document the Atlanta Chapter original Tuskegee Airmen provided a resource of photographs and videography to share our Georgia Tuskegee Airmen veterans' story for future generations. He also served as the recording secretary and documented the meetings, school visits, and speeches of the Tuskegee Airmen torchbearers, as well as the original Tuskegee Airmen Trailblazers. Mr. Coleman also does extensive volunteer work for Morris Brown College. As a grandfather, he worked to ensure his grandchildren had the opportunity to enjoy Atlanta and become exposed to the joy of photography. His grandson, Chris, enjoyed exposure in the Boy Scout Army Cadet Program during grade school. His granddaughter, Kyra, has completed her basic training at AIT and is now serving at her duty station. Mr. Coleman currently serves as a photographer with the marketing team at Tabernacle of Praise, Jonesboro, under the leadership of Pastor TJ McBride. Help me in recognizing and congratulating Master Sergeant Retired Stanley L. Coleman.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Everybody wants to talk about each other. We'll do this first.
Yeah, let's get you first and then we get everybody else.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
All right, group, looking right here on three. One, two, three. Again, one, two, three.
All right, let's have the others.
All right, everyone here.
All three, one, two, three.
Why is it so hard to answer?
Time you want to act quick.
That's what we got to fix.
All right, group, on three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you.
Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
And I would just like to announce that if you're here and signed up for the public comment, but you really want to comment on the zoning hearing requests, then you have a choice. You can come up now and wait when we address the zoning requests at the end of the meeting. So, first one is Terry Farr. Ms. Terry Farr. This was spillover from last week. Okay, Orlando Gooden.
Commissioners, I am disappointed with your vote on a code of conduct. What good is your opinion matters? Let your voice be heard. If you're not listening, or you just don't care. Commissioner Anderson, when you were the Chairman of the Board of Education and you said you are out of order, was that a request? If a member of the board told you, "I am not going to agree to a code of conduct because I know I'm going to break it," how would you have responded? You understand why a code of conduct is important, so why did you vote for it if there are no penalties or consequences? What is the incentive for commissioners to abide by the rules? We waited two years to establish a board of ethics. The Board of Commissioners voted to remove its powers because they filed a case against the Board of Commissioners for violating their own rules. Remember what the Ethics Board Member Aretha Ensley asked? Which one of you put this on the agenda? Commissioner Franklin asked Edmondson when he wanted to appoint Don McMillan to the Economic Development Board. Isn't that your business partner? Commissioner Franklin, if your real job now is a licensed real estate specialist, why are you voting on agenda items for developers and builders in your district? Both may be legal, but why aren't they unethical? Commissioner Hambrik, why did you vote to pay $54,000 to a consultant that never consulted with this board? With no code of conduct and no Ethics Board, then all this will be a selective accountability and a lack of transparency. This opens the door for corruption, collusion, conflict of interest, and quid pro quo. At the 2019 retreat, Commissioners said they wanted to change the image of Clayton County. Now the question is, change it to what? This is parliamentary procedures. You might want to brush up on it. There's an item on your agenda, I believe it's item number 26. Any objections to the consent agenda should be done before the vote.
Thank you. Dolores Bunch Keimer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have emailed all of you.
State your name again and your county of residence.
My name is, my appellation is Dolores Bunch Keimer Bay, and I was put into the Clayton County Detainment Center for having a ticket that was already resolved. So the ticket should have never went to Clayton County, should never have come to Clayton County. However, they transferred it to Clayton County, and that is double jeopardy. I had already resolved the ticket, then they had me go into court again in Clayton County to resolve the ticket. So they said that I never appeared in court. So when I was over at the Detainment Center, I think I've written all of you an email regarding this, that the treatment of inmates over there is absolutely horrendous. I am, my rights were being violated. A number of people's rights were being violated. At a jail, there is not, you have not been sentenced to prison. It's just a jail that holds you to be sentenced for prison. You should not have your rights being violated. I know that Mr. Hill has, you know, been suspended with pay, that Hilton still goes on without him, that his enforcement still goes on without him, that needs to be addressed. You all have the jurisdiction to handle the jail, to put some kind of restraints on what's going on over there. It's terrible. And to think that this is the state that the civil rights movement was the heaviest. Who is running that jail? Who is on this county commission? It is us who have to decide to do better for our own people. And most of the people that are in there is us. And the way that we are treating ourselves is terrible. So the only man that could actually stand up was a Caucasian who said that he was being mistreated in the jail, and therefore Victor Hill went and got on suspension because he mistreated a white man? But in the meantime, he mistreats his brothers every single day. I was mistreated in the jail. I was violated in the jail. I still do not have my driver's license. Are they planning to plant my driver's license in some scene of a crime so that I have to go to jail for that? What are we doing? What are we doing to our own people? This is our people who are doing it to our people. So we cannot say discrimination anymore. We can't say racism anymore. So we have to decide as a people that we want to do better than this. I have given Mr. Hill an injunction not to, on how we should contract and do business with each other. He decided to ignore that. I had told the police officer at the time-
Excuse me, ma'am, your time is up, but let me say this. Sheriff Hill's a constitutional officer. Only thing we can do is set his budget. He runs the jail. In light of his suspension, Chief Deputy Roland Boyer is the one who is in charge currently. So the only thing I can advise you is possibly to talk to the Governor or Deputy Chief Boyer for, to address your concerns.
Right, I never would have known that. If you would have responded to me by email and told me that, I would have known to do that. So I did, I did send you all an email regarding this. I still haven't gotten my driver's license back, and I'm just putting that on public record. So really, I'm just giving you all notice that I did do the proper steps, and I'm still going to follow the proper steps in order to get this taken care of. But I think the people need to know what's really going on in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Allen McIntosh.
Terry Allen McIntosh, Unincorporated Clayton County. Greetings, Chairman. Greetings, Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Davis, and Commissioner Franklin. Greetings. Now, I want to address some issues going on in the neighborhood and District Four here. Mr. Davis, we need a playground and a basketball court for these young people. They everywhere, you know? They everywhere. They need something to do, because you leave them idle, you got problems. You got heavy problems. And we want to address that issue. And I had, I talked to Officer Horton, and he said, "Y'all need some more police cars." He said, "They need to upgrade." So we need to take care of that, because we don't want them breaking down and coming to me, you know? The older ladies out there, they need that help. They need that help, you know? And then they go to shooting, then you say, "Why you kill them?" And you ain't get any time to upgrade. They trying to kill me. So we need to address these issues here, you know? And put some mentors, you know? You got Commissioner Dr. Anderson, get some, what you call those, the sorority and fraternity guys? Get them over there in my district, or help Mr. Davis here. Get them over there, you know? They need some mentoring, you know, instead of throwing them in jail, you know? Because when they start transitioning from middle school to high school, they gonna see the Baden Brothers. The gentleman, they talking about horrible Mr. DeShay Hill. Uh-uh. Uh-uh. The devil is a lie. He doing the job. He doing the job. Well, this is what we need, somebody to do the job, to protect our citizens in Clayton County and bring revenue here so they, we can make some money. Amen? That's what we here for. Make some money for the county. Bring the people who invest, invest. They ain't gonna invest if we wanted this oily compound. Got that oil, straight up. God bless you. He say this, my police car, this gentleman said, "It was a low income. They can't afford to go to those places that offer our coach here for several years." I had an annualism coaching in 2019, January 5th, five-year-old game. And I think my time about to be up, but yeah, I was coaching. It had a annualism, and it got me to over here, Southern Region, flew me to Emory. And they said, "When you blessed God's people, God bless you. God bless you."
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Mari Gusta.
My name is Mari Gusta, from Ellenwood, District One, unincorporated area. I come before you tonight to bring up a concern that is still heavily impacting our community. Just this morning, we had a tractor trailer get stuck in a ditch at the intersection of Williamson and Grant Road, and we should not have these large tractor trailers coming through our community on these narrow, curvy, two-lane farm roads. Our current infrastructure cannot handle these tractor trailers, and there has been several close cases of kids almost getting hit because there's no sidewalk for them to walk on to the retail shops on Grant Road. These tractor trailers should not be coming through several residential communities that exist on Grant Road. We currently have five large subdivisions between the parking lot of Walmart and East Tanner Church Road. We should not have tractor trailers coming through this specific area of our community. We need the roads widened, and we need the tractor trailers diverted in a different direction. Our community has not heard any updates when it comes to the newly proposed truck routes for the county. Before our newly elected Commissioner Dr. Lika Anderson came into office, the Board approved a warehouse to be placed on the corner of Williamson Road and Grant Road. The zoning was changed from RS-180 to MXI. This warehouse is sitting in the middle of four subdivisions, which means that we will encounter an influx of tractor trailers within this residential area. What will it take for us to stop these tractor trailers and warehouses from coming into our community? If we continue to have these close calls with our kids almost being hit by these tractor trailers, eventually a fatality will occur. A fatality does not have to happen because it could have been prevented. I ask that our community receive an update soon when it comes to proposed truck routes for District One and Clayton County. I ask that we stop these tractor trailers from riding in between the Grant Road Park location and the East Tanner Church Road location. No tractor trailer should be coming in between those two access points because there are only residential neighborhoods residing in that area. The warehouse that is being built on Williamson Road can be accessed from Williamson Road and Anvil Block Road. We have to truly look out for our community, our families, and our kids especially.
Thank you, sir. Rhonda Black.
I will speak later during planning and zoning.
Yes, ma'am. Miki Garber.
Bailiff, if you would, present this to the Commissioners, please. Please share this amongst all of you. Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, today I'm not going to talk about garbage. Today, I want to promote spiritual uplifting, moral uplifting, intellectual uplifting, and emotional uplifting. And my means of doing this is by promoting the arts in Clayton County. In order for us to obtain our rightful place as a leading county in the 22-county metropolitan area, we must not only emphasize monetary gains, but we must promote leadership in the arts. And with that, I would like to suggest that you all go see the play at the First Presbyterian Church of Jonesboro, Walking Across Egypt. Like a great movie with many star actors, this play is star-studded. It is uplifting spiritually, morally, intellectually, and emotionally. Commissioner Davis, since this church is in your district, I strongly suggest you attend. As far as the rest of the Commissioners, I think we all could use a little spiritual, moral, intellectual, and emotional uplifting. For those of you who have a kinky side, there are sexual caveats in the play. This play also supports hungry children at Suter Elementary and the Humane Society. Do any of you have any questions?
What was the name of that play? Give Mr. Garber.
Walking Across Egypt.
I got the church, I just didn't get the name of the play.
Sir?
I got the church, I just didn't get the name of the play.
Yes, and the brochure was information where it is and everything. Please, all of you, use it.
That's Front Porch Players, right?
Sir?
Front Porch Players.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, we go every year. The wife and I go every, every year.
I didn't see you there.
They got more than one night, Mr. Garber.
Please attend.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Reverend Thomas Lee Holt.
I have a name got by yours, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Something named by yours.
Okay, no problem. Chris Gallagher.
Chris Gallagher, Rivers Edge, Clayton County there. I know they tabled it for right now, but they're looking to build, you know, homes next to us. Glad to hear that he talked about 18 to 19 homes instead. He said they might be 300,000 to 400,000. I'm hoping that you have him stick to that. Possibly, the average home is about 350,000, because, you know, we want to protect our investments, our homes. I love Clayton County, I want to continue living in Clayton County, and I worked hard, you know, and I'm just hoping to protect my home values, I'm hoping that, you know, you make them build homes at least 350,000. And I want to thank you guys for your hard work there and that, and that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Wayne Madden.
I apologize, I broke my mask. It's good to see all of you all. I've never seen you before in person, and I've never been to one of your meetings, but I'm here tonight.
State your name, county.
Wayne Madden, Clayton County. I live in the same subdivision as Chris. I'm not concerned about my home value. Had I known that's what was going on, I'd have did everything in my power to make sure that would never happen. We should have bought it, I told you about it. I understand progress and all that, but that ain't why I moved there. For many years, we wouldn't even let that grocery store in. We don't want somebody to come in with a subdivision, I don't care what they building. Okay? Simple as that. I do understand Victor's a constitutional officer. I had eye surgery last year, I was at my eye surgeon last year when the Clayton County Sheriff's beat that guy's head in. We saw it from across the office building I was in. I ain't telling you where I heard, I'm telling you what, the guy was on my, he said, "Come here, come here, come here." There's no reason to mistreat prisoners. I agree with that lady. I know you can do something about that, maybe not at the sheriff's office. I talked to Victor before he got elected. I'm not gonna get into personnel and all that, because I could see way out, you know. But, uh, I know, I know your job is difficult, so I don't suffer from any illusions, I hope none of the public are. So, do everything you can to make stuff run smooth. Thank you, I enjoyed it, and I will be back very soon. As a matter of fact, I think I'm gonna do this every time I open, I'm gonna make sure I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Peggy Klein. Okay. James Williams. James Williams. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now consider the consent agenda with the inclusion of 2021-250.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next item is item number 26, Ordinance 2021-241.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Board. I have ordinance 2021-241, which is the ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia. It's amended specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part One, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, Board of Commissioners, to amend consent agenda process, to revise parliamentary procedures, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide an effective date, and for other purposes. Before you all vote, I just wanted to make you all aware that the item that is before you is slightly different than the one that was in your agenda book. The one that's before you changes the process that, instead of mentioning moving an item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda by motion, it's just upon request without the need for a motion and a second to that motion. That way, it'll be clear for the clerk.
Does that mean that every item, if someone wants to remove an item to the regular agenda, it can be done?
That's correct.
All right, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Probably moved and seconded, are there any questions?
I do.
Commissioner Franklin.
In the past, I've been told that parliamentary, parliamentary procedures were never officially adopted by this board, specifically from you, sir. And, and it's in question to quite a few things. So, I would like to know, first of all, I'm glad to know that we're following the proper parliamentary procedures, but I really would like to know what happens to all of the votes before now that were not within these procedures.
I'm not quite sure I understand your question. Are you asking whether this retroactively applies?
No, let me say this again, as we just affirmed, and as we've all known, and I want to say thank you to our board member to the right, because coming from the school board, she had some insight, and I brought it before this board previously. And based upon everything that I have read and researched, and especially spoke to those attorneys with the state, when you're looking at an agenda that is a consent agenda, the spirit of that is the only thing that's supposed to be on there that does not require discussion, or that the board is all on board with. And that is something that's been tried in the court of law. And so, what I'm looking at is we're finally coming on board, but at the end of the day, we have been operating outside of those parliamentary procedures. So, my other question is specifically, not just what we do for in the past, but do, does this require us to go back and adopt all of the, the procedures as outlined? That are used in most meetings and officially adopted by meetings, no matter what board?
Are you asking whether this, this ordinance is retroactive? And that you'd have to go back and re-adopt previous consent agendas?
That's the first one, if you want to start there.
No, this applies from the beginning. If this, if this ordinance passes, it starts from today, moving forward.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, and the boards?
One more, I'm sorry, so you're telling me we don't have to officially adopt Roberts Rules of Order? Because we have not.
The board's parliamentary procedures are set forth in Section 2-35 and 2-36 of the county code.
So, the Roberts Rule of Order does not govern our meetings, final question?
It governs a portion of the meetings. However, your board, this board has adopted parliamentary procedures that are set forth by ordinance. This sets forth relating to the agenda, how the agenda is adopted, including the consent agenda, how it's placed on there. That's what Section 2-35 is. 2-36, which is in the code that this board has adopted, deals with parliamentary procedures. Things that aren't set forth in that code section are governed by Roberts rules.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Three, two, it passes.
Who were the two?
Commissioner Davis and myself.
The next section is public hearings for zoning. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have 10 minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the 10-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speakers will be expected to immediately cease speaking. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphones, begin by stating your name, address, and name of your organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Clapping, holding up signs, yelling will not be permitted. The first item is item number 27, BOC 2104-0105, FLUP Amendment, MDR to allow 195 single-family attached town units.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. The case is-
Hard to hear you, Mr.-
Oh, sorry. Remove my mask, you can hear me.
Is the applicant here?
Chairman? Yes, so, gonna make a note regarding this. Items 26, 27, 28 are all companion, associated with each other at the same location. Staff is making a recommendation at this time due to, I said 27, 28, 29, sorry about that, correction. No problem. Staff is making a recommendation at this time to table the requests, the mention request, due to the fact that there is a new layout and design presented by the applicant, and staff would like to take that and have it reviewed from the site development group for Clayton County for further discussion.
What was the applicant's response? Is the applicant here?
She's here, Michelle Battle will be representing.
Ms. Battle? What is your desire, ma'am?
We would ask for this matter to be deferred, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562, 3562, I'm at North Lake, I just moved. Georgia 30084, thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Ms. Battle and I have had lengthy conversations about this, and I have agreed to defer it with us saying this will be the last time it will be tabled.
Excuse me, Commissioner Davis, I cannot hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I said, Michelle Battle and I have spoken length about this matter, and we have both agreed that we want to table this, but definitely get it done in December.
Chairman and Board, for clarity, did we make a date for the tabling? The next hearing will be December 21st?
Correct.
All right, what is your motion, sir?
Motion to table.
Till?
December 21st, is it? December 21st.
All right, is there a second? Probably moved and seconded by Commissioner Hambrick, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next item is number 28, which is companion, you just doing them all three together?
Yes, we took them all three together.
The next one will be 30, I believe.
Next item is item 30. BOC 2102-0098, FLUM, amend TCU to MDR to allow a PUD residential development.
Again, the applicant is here to represent their case.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law again. We are asking for this matter to also be tabled to the December 21st meeting to give us an opportunity to address some issues concerning traffic. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Again, we will grant Ms. Battle this table until December 21st. This is for all three numbers, 30 through 32.
30 what?
30 through 32, 30 through 31.
30, 31, and 32.
Correct.
Your motion is tabled until December 21st?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and seconded by Commissioner Hambrick, any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
If we're here to speak on any of this, can, can we still have our own committee to speak?
Ma'am, ma'am, if you, if you would, speak with, speak with one of the staff members, they'll tell you exactly what happened.
The next item is-
But, hold on, Madam Clerk, but all those items, if you're here for one of those items, it's tabled till December 21st, which means there'll be no action taken tonight.
Okay, but I just wanted to clarify the statement that was written on paper.
Okay, again, talk to staff, thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
The next item is number 33, BOC 2108-0138, FLUP, is to amend the map from GC to MXI.
Chairman and Board, items 33, 34, and 35 are associated as well, and the applicant is here to table that as well. We received a formal request to table these three items.
Is applicant here?
The applicant submitted a letter, a formal request to table.
What was the numbers again, 33, 34?
35.
That's correct, 33, 34, and 35.
Whose district is this?
Mine, District One.
All right. Yes, what would you like to do?
We can table the matter at this time, that's fine.
Until when?
Until the next meeting.
Which is? December 21st.
December 21st, okay.
All right, the motion is to table these three items till December 21st. Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and seconded by Commissioner Hambrick, any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next item is item number 36, BOC 2109-0144, CUP, for a new 5,000 square feet place of worship and two 2,000 square feet learning center buildings.
Chairman and Board, this is the same applicant from before, different location. They have submitted a formal request to table this to the next board hearing meeting, December 21st.
And you received notification now?
Official notification was submitted to staff.
I'm sorry?
Official letter was submitted to staff to table.
Commissioner Anderson.
I move that we table it to December 21st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hambrick, second, the motion, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next item is item number 37, BOC 2109-0145, CUP, for a new 2,085 square foot automotive service facility.
Chairman and Board, the applicant is here to represent this case. Staff recommended approval, ZAG recommended denial.
Is the applicant present? Applicant, please come forward. What's the applicant's name?
I'm sorry.
Applicant's name.
This will be the Southbound Development Group?
Anybody here from Southbound Development Group or representative? Okay, have you received notice that they weren't gonna be here?
No notice.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation for us, Commissioner Anderson, or do you want to proceed?
No, I just, I move for denial at this time.
Okay, well, we have to have public hearing, so you want to continue? Okay, go ahead, continue.
I made the recommendation for staff, ZAG make a recommendation for denial, so at this time, if you wish, you would need to-
So, that's all the information you had, was the Valvoline oil change station?
So, it'll be public hearing.
Okay. All right, so is there anybody here who'd like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Please come forward. Just, just wait till next, we'll get you next.
Mari Gusta in District One, unincorporated Ellenwood area. We do have several oil stations already that exist on that particular street. Currently, we have, we have the Tire Plus, we also have a Valvoline place there, and we also have a Goodyear location for the oil change as well that exists there. So, honestly, using more green space for another oil change place is not, in my opinion, useful, and it's really not what District One is wanting for our community.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Turner, I will do my time because I'll be piggybacking on what this private said.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? All right, Commissioner Anderson.
So, I can move for denial now?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, I move for- So at this time, I move for denial of twenty-one oh-nine dash zero four five.
All right. Commissioner's motion is for denial, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
The next item is item number thirty-eight, BOC twenty-one zero-nine dash zero one forty-six CUP for an existing convenience store.
Chairman and Board, the applicant is here to represent their case. Staff recommend an approval with one condition, ZAG recommended to deny this request. Again, for the record, this is for case BOC two-one zero-nine zero-one four-six.
Sir, I need one of them.
The request is for a convenience store located at sixty-five fifty Mount Zion Boulevard in Marl, Georgia. District One.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Fulmer, and I reside in DeKalb County, but I'm here to assist a Clayton County business owner. This is Mr. Rom-
Okay, so before you get started, how many minutes would you like to reserve for a rebuttal? Should anybody be in opposition to the request?
None.
None, okay, please proceed then.
Each of you were given a copy of the reasons that we feel that the cup should be approved. I don't have really much more to say, other than we feel that the cup approval would not be interest to any of the general welfare of the community. Number two, the approval does not interfere with the comprehensive plan, as was objected to in the previous meeting. If you look at page two, it shows that there are several grocery stores within a four-mile radius of Mr. Pradja Patti's business. Major stores like Publix is just two miles away, Kroger's, Walmart, and then there's several other smaller food markets in that area. If you look on the back of that page, the convenience stores, one of the objections was that there are so many of the convenience stores in that area. From my research, it appears as though most of them are big box, like CVS's and Quick Trips and Circle K's. There aren't any small business owner type food convenience stores in that area. Back to number three, the cup approval really won't affect the use or the value of the area. It's a well-kept building, it has a nice storefront, it's aesthetically pleasing. None of the neighboring properties or business owners will suffer any negative impacts, and we believe that the denial or strict application of this ordinance will constitute unnecessary hardship on the owner. It also deprives the parcel owner his access to reasonable economic use. We also believe that we... Any perceived negative aspects of a conditional use permit could be minimized through some conditions that could possibly add value to the community. For example, Mr. Pradja Patti is a vegan, and I'm sure he would have no obligations with... Or no problems with trying to increase, you know, the sale of fresh fruits and vegetables at his business. And that's basically how we feel. We appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, this is a public hearing, so Ms. Deloach, anybody in favor of?
No.
Anybody in favor of? Anybody like to speak in favor of this request? All right, in opposition to? Please come forward.
Chairman, good evening, Commissioners. Regina Deloach, unincorporated Rex. As she stated, we have about fourteen convenience stores within a three-mile radius of that area. Adding an additional convenience store does not play into our sustainability plan. It does not play into our health and wellness plan for our community. I see that it's listed in reference to the Ellendale Apartments. That does not give fresh fruits and vegetable to that area. So we currently have thirteen food deserts, and that still, again, does not bring in fresh fruits and vegetables to our community. Again, and it does not bring in livable, sustainable wages. We have approved on Highway forty-two and Fielder Road. That is a new convenience store that is coming. We have a new convenience store that's coming off of Rex Road, so that is an additional. So I'm asking you to deny this applicant's request, because that is not what our community in District One is requesting is an additional convenience store.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Anybody else oppose? Commissioner Anderson?
At this time, I would like to move for a denial of BOC twen... Excuse me, twenty-one oh-nine dash zero one four-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved to second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
The next item is BOC twenty-one zero-nine dash zero one forty-nine modification amendment to PUD planned development district standards to reduce the front yard setback for eleven lots within the Spivey Estate subdivision.
Chairman and Board, point of clarity for this one, this is a modification to an existing subdivision plat, again, for BOC two-one zero-nine zero-one four-nine. Planning zoning staff recommended approval with one condition. ZAG recommended approval with... Conditioned as well. And again, this request is to modify existing land lot development standards. So for the PUD, they're changing, they're reducing the front yard by fifteen percent to build eleven homes.
Is the applicant present? Please come forward, sir. State your name and county residence or the company you represent.
Kevin Baumgard, DeKalb County, represent Capshaw Development.
How many minutes would you like to save in rebuttal? Should somebody be in opposition to?
Oh, I'm sure they're in opposition, so they can have-
You want to save any minutes to come back up here and speak? How many?
Uh, just two.
Okay. Put eight minutes on the timer, please. Please proceed, sir.
Um, it's pretty simple. We are just asking, we went out here, we bought eleven lots, they're... They have some elevation challenges, so we saw the houses around them, and they're larger houses, so that we came for a modification in order to build a bigger house that will match more of what's existing there. We could build houses as they stand, but it would have to be a smaller house, so we've went through this process to try to make a... Build a bigger house. Pretty simple.
All right. Are you finished? Are you finished? Okay. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak in favor of? This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition? Anybody oppose?
Good evening. My name is Susan Millsap. I live in Clayton County. I live on Canoga Drive, which is a street that is off of Emerald Drive that is in this section of Emerald Drive that's requested the construction of new homes. I'm assuming the construction of these homes and requested change in setback will be approved. Our neighborhood consists of all age groups, from children to senior adults. Many vehicles, including school buses, enter and exit from our streets during the day and evening hours. We are one way in and one way out of, in our community. There are already issues entering and exiting off of Emerald Drive onto Camp Avenue. Construction traffic will be a major concern and impact our commute and transportation needs and schedules. With this in mind, it would be helpful and beneficial to our residents if we knew when pre-construction preparation on this property would start. Also, when, how many, and on which home constr... On which lots home construction would begin. And quickly, I have a misunderstanding on the approval conditions, and it said, the ZAG recommendation said lots six through eighteen. When I counted from six to eighteen, that's thirteen lots. And my understanding was this was eleven lots, so clarification in this would be appreciated. We would request that it be denied, but I don't know what happens when you assume.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to?
Hi, my name is Peggy Klein. I live at nineteen thirty-six Emerald Drive. We've had two meetings before. Our concern mainly is these lots. We have been told for years that these lots were unbuildable lots. When you come off of the street, excuse me, the lots drop down drastically. And our understanding is, is that they're wanting to move the houses forward so that they don't have to bring in field dirt to bring the lots up. I understand they're gonna have to bring some dirt in, but they would have to bring in more to keep the houses back where they're originally plotted to be on the plat there. It was also mentioned to us that if they had to bring in more dirt, it would cost them more money. That's not really our concern. We're trying to keep the vision of our neighborhood up. You know, they're talking about moving the houses closer to the road. To us, it feels like it's gonna look like apartments or condominiums, townhomes, being shoved up on the street. It's gonna shorten the driveways. We're looking at, you know, every home is gonna have a minimum of two cars. If they've got teenagers, there's more cars. With the much shorter driveway, there's nowhere to park the cars, they're gonna have to park on the street. We don't do that down there, and we don't want to see that down there. We're also very concerned about Rum Creek that runs across the middle of those properties there. And, you know, the possibility of them getting dammed up or, you know, stuff getting into the creek that's gonna flow into Lake Spivey. You know, that's a big concern for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Jim Williams. I've been a resident of Clayton County for thirty years. I live on eighteen forty-nine Emerald Drive, and that's right across from where the lots where they want to build. And if you go down to Emerald Drive and you see those lots, the elevation drops off, because where they built the road for the Spivey Estates is all field dirt. So you've got anywhere between twenty-five and forty-foot drop-off. And then you've got a flat spot, and then it drops off again in the back, and that is where Rum Creek is. Rum Creek feeds Lake Spivey. They had a lot of problems, as y'all are probably aware, when they built the Spivey Estates. They had to come in and rebuild that road three times because of the runoff of the water. They told us originally that those were unbuildable. We came to the county commission meeting, we had a lot of discussion about that. What happened? Is they approved it? What happened to... Those lots are unbuildable. I know there was some question about the flood plain, the hundred-year flood plain. That hasn't come... Evidently, that's been changed also. So I would recommend that it be denied. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
My name is Les Pruitt. I live on nineteen twenty-seven Emerald Drive. I've been a resident of Clayton County since nineteen ninety-two. Looking at the traffic that's already on Emerald Drive, it's getting worse every day. And it's not only just the traffic. It's... We've requested speed bumps several years ago, and nothing ever happened. But we need to... Somebody needs to control the speed on Emerald Drive, and you had twenty-two or eleven homes. Tell them to, you're gonna have more. And before it's over with, there's gonna be somebody hurt or killed. There's people out there walking streets, and we don't need any more traffic on the house. But the main thing is to preserve the... Our neighborhood. We don't need those... The lots built on... We don't need them to be used like that, because, as Jim said, Mr. Weaver said, we were told earlier on several years ago that they were unbuildable. Now, I've heard that where we had some wildlife back in there at one time, before they started going in and disturbing the land recently, that nobody has heard the owls or the woodpeckers. And so somebody's came in and upset the fowl, the... The wildlife. And I was told back years ago that that was preserved land back there. It was not supposed to be built on. And then... But it was anyway, but that was then. But right now, we need to have this denied, because, like I said, everybody said it's unbuildable. I rode by there yesterday afternoon to look down, and on the curb, looking at, it's probably about an eighty-five degree drop, very substantial. And it's about twenty feet down. Then it levels off for about thirty feet, then there's another one. Now, the gentleman said that, well, we can, you know, move it closer, make smaller homes or make larger homes. But with those lots, you can't... They're not buildable. They weren't thin, and they shouldn't be now. And I don't know who pulled the strings on it, but it shouldn't have pulled. We need to deny it, deny it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? All right, sir, you got two minutes for a rebuttal. Please set the timer for two minutes.
Good. So I just go back to the point that they... As far as anybody has ever seen their buildable platted lots that we could build on tomorrow, we're attempting to build a larger house, try to match more of what's there. And it's an effort of what we try to do as a local company, to try to build it back better. And this has been a hard process that we didn't have to go to, but we chose to do it to try, because we believe it's the right thing, and that's why we've gone to lengths to try to... To try to build a larger home, decrease the front setback so we can fit them.
All right. Commissioner Davis?
I do have several questions. First of all, it's the fifteen-foot setback. There's no home throughout that side of Emerald Drive that has a fif... I'm sorry, a fifteen-foot side yard setback. So my question is, how did that number come into effect? Two, it goes to what many of the residents said. To look at the rear of those lots is an extreme drop-off. The extreme drop-off, or the trench, or whatever we want to say, Rum Creek down there was built based off of water. Right behind that, we have MD Roberts Middle School, as well as, was it Lake Spivey? The other community. Which one is it?
I think it's Spivey Village.
Yes, Lake Spivey Village. Within the Lake Spivey Village, we've had several complaints, and I've seen, and Mr. Ngkia has seen with our own eyes, cracked foundations in those homes based off of just deterioration of the land. That is a major issue. For me, I think we only have one of two ways of going here. One is either to defer, to come up with a plan, or to move on with the inevitable. I would leave that as your choice.
Okay. The first one was the side setback. We didn't touch the side setbacks, that's what was always platted. I don't think the side setbacks will come into play for what we're doing. We'll have plenty of side yards. The slope is not that bad. We shot it with a transit, and maybe on the high side of the street, it's about ten foot till you level off. We're gonna build basements, so that we're gonna account for all that elevation change in the back, and so we don't have to get into the back slope. And pouring foundations and stuff, I mean, that's what we do on a daily basis, and if we have questions about the soils and stuff, then we hire engineers in order to certify that the foundations will withstand this time and do our due diligence that way.
So you want to move ahead, or do you want to defer this until December?
I got a question. I got a question. So you said you can already build houses there? You just need the CUP, right?
Modification.
Is it what?
Modification.
A modification to build a larger home?
Yes.
So if you don't get the modification, then you're gonna build a home, smaller homes?
Yes, sir.
So it's gonna get built anyway?
Yes, sir.
That was my only question. Any other questions?
Also, as well, as far as the runoff into Lake Spivey, has there been any type of, of, of study that was done to find out what is going to be the effect on Lake Spivey as well?
I'm assuming a hydrology was done when they were platted by the people that platted them. I don't know the date of that plat is. Do you know when they were platted?
Two thousand, early two thousands. What, what year, two thousands roughly? Two thousand and one.
So, you know, we gotta, we have to, as a builder, always maintain BMPs. We've always gotta deal with silt. We've always, especially this last couple of years, rainfall has been worse than ever, and we do our best to filter and control it. And that's, you know, about the best that we can do with runoff.
Yeah, and I know with Lake Spivey HOA, they just had a huge project where they went through silt removal. I know they're not trying to go through that anytime soon. Again, do you wanna defer this, or do you wanna move on?
Uh, no, I don't wanna defer.
Then, then I wouldn't.
I'm on your motion.
I motion that we deny this.
All right, motions for denials are second. Move and second. Any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
The next item is item number forty, which is ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash two forty-three.
Again, this is item forty, B O C. two one zero nine zero one five two, the track we will be presenting.
Yes, this is ordinance twenty-twenty-one two forty-three, an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia's amended specifically, Appendix A zoning, to delete Article Six Development Standards, Section six-point-three-oh-E one-B, to delete Chapter Eighteen, Article Four, permits and certificates, Section eighteen dash forty-one-A three, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability and for other purposes. The text that is deleted is a replacement of an existing fence with a new fence that is of the same type and height and in the same location as the existing fence, provided the replacement fence is otherwise in full compliance with this ordinance. And Mr. G K. can speak to any questions about the effect of the ordinance.
Chairman Vice and Commissioners, good evening. This is to clarify a discrepancy in the code so that we can monitor fences better. What it's doing is making a differentiation between replacing a fence and repairing a fence. When you're repairing, it's okay. You don't need a permit. But when you're replacing a fence, we are request, we are action by, by this ordinance that a permit be issued. The reason is this. Most of the fences in the county are not permitted. The fence, you can tell the ones that are old that are not permitted. The rough sides of the fence are outside. So we're just trying to monitor the fence permits much better.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the text amendment? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Come forward, please.
My name is Rhonda Black. I live in Hampton, Georgia. I guess this is a question as well. Is this saying that putting this into place would require people to get a permit to put a fence up on their property?
It's currently a requirement to have a permit to put a new fence on any property.
So then what does this change?
Well, this change, the difference between here, the language is replacing and repairing. If you have an existing fence and you're repairing, then you don't need a permit because the assumption is the fence is there. But when you're replacing, then that's when we want the, the replacing of fence to be permitted.
But if you already, if you already had a permit for the fence that you put up to begin with, and you're replacing it, you have to get another permit to replace your fence that you already got a permit for?
Uh, yes.
And the purpose of that would be for consistency. So you just don't put up some cheaper type fence or something that's.
But I don't have an HOA in my neighborhood, and I can put up any kind of fence I want. So I'm gonna have to pay to get a permit twice if I have to replace my fence?
That's what the ordinance states.
Then I disagree with that completely. If I wanna take down my chain link fence and put up a privacy fence, I should be able to do that without having to get another permit.
Thank you, ma'am.
That doesn't make any sense.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? I will make the motion to approve this. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right, motion fails due to lack of a second. Next.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin?
I think it's important for us, first of all, thank you for coming forth, because you do live in an area where you're a commissioner. It's such a blessing to serve you. But Mr. G K., what I would ask us to do, I know a lot of these changes in zoning are dealing with issues, and we know those issues have to be dealt with. But we have to understand is that one solution is not for our whole county. We need to look at the zoning. There are areas of our county that they don't have any, anything under an acre. And so in those areas, as you so eloquently stated, they're not in HOAs. So I just urge us, when we're looking at resolving a lot of issues in the county, be specific so that we know that those ordinances that we're looking to change affect the areas of the concerned space and not cause a burden or hardship to others. Thank you.
Next.
The next item is item number forty-one, ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash two forty-four.
Next is ordinance twenty-twenty-one two forty-four, ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance is amended specifically, Appendix A zoning, Article Six Development Standards, Section six-point-seven, to delete Section six-point-seven-A-A-zero-two and six-point-seven-A-A-zero-three, and substitute in lieu thereof new sections six-point-seven-A-A-zero-two and six-seven, six-point-seven-A-A-zero-three, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability and for other purposes. And Mr. G K. can speak specifically to what is being changed.
Steve J.?
Commissioners, the residential architectural design standards. It's part of what we're trying to do, to change the aesthetic landscape of the county. There are so many things that we're struggling with, what is being built in the residential product. What we are asking in this case is to have some architectural elements to make our community look better. And also to require certain things, the, the elements that you see are in other jurisdictions, they must have, and they are not here. We rely on conditions when we're doing zoning, and that is not the better way to handle it. The better way to handle it is to have a standard way of doing it so that when builders who are used to doing this in other jurisdictions come to Clayton County, the same rules apply. So the whole idea is to improve the aesthetics of the county.
All right, thank you. This is public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? Mr. G K., this deals with the new, new subdivisions, correct?
Uh, yeah, this will be all new residential buildings, whether it's in the subdivision or in a single lot. Once it's a, a, a new residential building, yes.
All right, is there a motion? If we get a motion or second, since I asked for a motion, see if you, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Any questions? Commissioner Hampton?
Uh, yes, I'm not clear on, I'm looking at forty-one, then I'm looking at the, these are companions. Is that correct?
It does not have a companion.
Okay. Okay, so it's oh-one-five-three?
Yes.
Oh-one-five-three, it's the, the, the text amendment that we're discussing.
It's not a companion to the last one?
It's not a companion to the last one.
Okay.
It stands by itself.
Thank you.
I do have couple of questions, Mr. G K.
Yes, sir.
The first is, right now, there does not exist any minimum architectural standards.
No, it touches upon, it, it's not organized, some things are there and some things are not there. We're trying to introduce the things that are missing.
And my, my concern is that, I know we can't put architectural design standards in certain areas, but we would still have, we would still have to add conditions if we moved in other areas, but they'd have to be above those standards. Is that correct? We couldn't, we couldn't compromise those standards in any, in any means.
You can put conditions on top of the standards that you have if you wanna go that route. But let me share with the board one of the things about this. Energy efficiency. If you build three-level homes and you use two compressors, your energy bill gonna be high, partly because they are functioning to cool and heat three levels. But if you have compressors, one each for each floor, then the ones that you are not in can be turned off. It reduces, it reduces cost. If, since we also in the housing business, we understand to attract the clientele and the folks we have, based on what we have been preaching in the county, is to bring those type architectural characters that creates the concept of neighborhoods. If you drive around and see the boxes that are being built, in five, ten years, they look like, like they've been there for twenty. That's all this is about.
So what will be the next step if this were approved?
The next step is whoever is applying for building permit, starting tomorrow morning, must abide by this with one exception. If you have a plan book, either in the works are approved, we can't go retracted because that it's been worked on already. And I think we might have two plan books that we're trying to decide. Besides that, it starts tomorrow morning.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin?
I'm a bit confused. I think it was twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, we spent quite a bit of money to redo all of our zoning because it needed to be redone. And I think it was, I think it was twenty-seventeen that we went through this process. And I wanna say we hired a firm to do it. I think it was a law firm, actually, who did it. And there were architectural design standards put in there. And as I, as you were talking, I think that you might wanna look there because there are some architectural design standards there. Are there not? No, I'm asking you, Tyler. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna mention, Commissioner Franklin, there is mention of an overlay that, that we improved, but the overlay has specific design and architectural standards for properties. But what Mr. G K. is presenting is will be a county-wide initiative in our ordinance.
Thank you. And the other point of confusion for me, are we talking about architectural design and appearance standards? Are we talking about really working hard to build any, asking for energy-efficient homes to be built? I think there is a little bit of confusion based upon what you just shared. So if you could just provide a little bit of clarity.
What I said, in, in terms of energy efficiency, is the heating, what it takes to heat a house, which is considered the, the energy it takes, the P T U's it takes. Or in terms of energy efficiency you're referring to, on the residential side, you do not do lead. You don't get into lead because they are very expensive. When you start getting into firm-based design, where you are specifying materials, because there are materials, you can actually go to high-end energy efficiency homes. You see they're only in custom homes. Where not in where you, you, you do in truck home, truck builders. You see that in, in custom homes.
I think I'm understanding a little bit better, but I believe that, once again, what we're doing is we are stabbing at issues and maybe not necessarily looking at it from a holistic or comprehensive manner so that we can really get to where we wanna be as a community. So I, I do hear you.
Any other questions?
Yes, one more. So would we begin to, when do you think these architectural design standards would be in place?
If approved tonight, they will be in place tomorrow morning. And if I may add, we also consulted the Home Builders Association when we started drafting this. To, we send it to them, send it to the consulting company that, that do our inspections. They had some, we had some discussions with them, and each time, we refer them to what other jurisdictions are doing. So just to let the board know that we did not do this in a vacuum. We actually reached out to the Home Builders Association.
So you looked at best practices around the area?
Yes.
Yeah, this is not a question or anything. It sounds like we are working toward bettering the county and the look of the county, and this is just a start. It's not a whole package kind of thing. We're just doing it step by step. It's what it sounds like to me.
And that's the only way you can do it, Commissioner.
Okay.
It's not possible to put your arms around it at one time. You start some plates and gradually start doing it.
Thank you. May I make a quick recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that for clarity purposes, it would be easier and more, easier for us to understand when you're trying to present something like this, just a simple chart of what we have, what we're doing, asking to change it to for everybody. We get all this stuff written, which we do, which is great, but we just spent a lot of time back and forth with everybody trying to interpret what you said, what was written, and it just would be a whole lot easier if we just had a chart. It should only take about three to four minutes. Just a thought.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I have something to say also. I just wanna say, she is correct. I'm always looking for a visual too. So again, what we have, because are you gonna make everybody, the standard for everybody to have brick? I mean, what are you, what are your standards gonna be when we're looking at these homes? And so we need something to see, you know, is it gonna be aesthetics? Is it gonna be inside? So just give us something that we, that's concrete that we can see, because you can't guarantee that a builder is gonna go in there and do, you know, do what you say, he says he's gonna do. They do a lot of things in the middle of the night and don't do right. So we gotta make, just give, you know, the, like I said, it's subjective. And so make sure you give us, you know, something concrete that we can look at, and then we can move forward on that without having all the, having all of these questions.
Okay, I will do that. And if you might indulge me, this is exterior architectural standards.
Okay.
Nothing inside. I believe at some point in this process, we presented a chart. The format that you see it in now is the format for Unicode. It's much easier to edit. That's the format that you see. When we started, we went with a chart to make it easy to understand.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Next.
Next item is item number forty-two, ordinance twenty-two-one dash two forty-five.
Uh, yes, uh, ordinance twenty-two-one two forty-five is, um, initiating a, an amendment, it's an ordinance to amend, I don't know why it's reading like that. So ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance is amended specifically Appendix A. Um, zoning article to add film and movie studios as a permitted use to Article three, section three point two-nine LI Light Industrial District in Article three, section three point three-one HI Heavy Industrial District to provide an effective date of the ordinance to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severalability and for other purposes. And Mr. GK can explain in detail what that comprehend.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. This one speaks for itself. It speaks the economic impact of zoning. We do not have the ability to, for movie studios to come in unincorporated Clayton County. This will allow us to attract those businesses. We've, um, there, there have been, um, the director of tourism has, um, a number of clients that want to come to the county. Because we do not have this, um, they can't come. And this will allow us to attract those, uh, new businesses.
All right. Again, public hearing. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? All right, I'll take- Excuse me. Yes, sir.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. My statement is, in layman's terms and simply put, what is this ordinance? In what way is it gonna move us forward rather than keep us at the same level we're already at? That's, that's my question to you and please explain it. I'm a simple man with simple ideas. And simply put it to me, how's this gonna help?
The way I understand it, this allows there to be movie studios built out in heavy and industrial areas. So if you have a vacant warehouse, then they can convert that warehouse into a movie studio. So-
Moving it from heavy industrial to light industrial?
Uh, no, it's not moving it. It is just making the use, um, making movies to use, making them to be permitted in those, uh, in light and heavy industrial.
So if one warehouse is empty and they want a movie studio, was it, what does it do to the other heavy industrial occupants of surrounding areas?
Doesn't do anything, in my opinion. As a matter of fact, it brings economic development in terms and jobs. Uh, we all know that movie studios are the big thing.
It doesn't condemn them in any way?
No, no. Movie studio would be a permitted use under this ordinance.
And so you could have light industrial and heavy industrial all in the same acre?
If it's owned, but that way, that's correct.
Okay, thank you for your, for your answer.
Can I ask a question, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Now, Mr. GK, if this weren't there to put a movie studio in, would that be a conditional use permit? If it weren't included in this?
No.
As of now?
Right now, it's not even listed. So right now, what, what they've been doing is rebuffing people, pushing them to the cities.
Okay.
The, the cities have those big buildings that they are using for studios now. But we just wanna attract those businesses to the county.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, wait, ma'am, we're not even on that. Uh, anybody in opposition? All right, is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second it?
Probably moved a second. Any questions? Any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Next item is order, ordinance twenty-two-one dash two forty-eight.
Yes, uh, ordinance twenty-two-one two forty-eight is the ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County, Georgia's amended specifically Appendix A zoning. Article two zoning districts established to add provisions to section two point one for RMTSF residential multifamily to single family. Article three zoning district intent permitted uses and conditional uses to add subsection three point three-seven and three point three-eight establishing the, establishing the intent permitted uses and standards for RMTSF residential multifamily to single family district. And to add such residential district standards to provide an effective date of this ordinance to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severalability and for other purposes. And again, Mr. GK can speak in detail to what this-
Mr. GK.
Yes, but, um, this item is to correct, um, an issue that happened years ago. I think, um, a very long time ago in the county, um, single family detached neighborhoods were zoned RM, multifamily. And over the years, our zoning code have changed. The, and made those single family homes subdivisions zoned RM to become non-conforming. And as such, it deprived the homeowners the ability to improve their homes, like put a deck or add a room. So we had a lot of issues coming up as a, that came up as a result of us denying permits for improvement. Then the neighborhood, we all got together and started discussing it. We started researching to find out that it is pervasive in the county. It's not just in one district. It's all over the county. So in that discussion, talking, um, my department and legal figuring out the best way to handle it is to identify where those things occurred, create those classification for it that would allow them to enjoy their, um, their properties. And at the same time contain it in that no properties can be rezoned into RMTSF. It's designed only to make those, those subdivisions whole. Uh, so that's the, the need for, to do this.
And may I add something, Mr. Chairman, to this? Uh, plain and simple is that people in a subdivision and single family, if their house burned or whatever, they could not rebuild as a single family because it was zoned multifamily. So that is a problem we found out, you know, not just in my district but throughout the county, that that was happening. Or if the person wanted to add a deck or whatever, they had to go through, like you say, the permit thing. But the biggest thing with me is that a person could not rebuild a single family home in a subdivision that all, all single family dwellings, residential dwellings because of the multifamily zoning issue. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed?
I have a question, but-
Yes, ma'am.
Well-
Now, you need to come to the mic.
And maybe I just don't fully understand, but, um, my name is Rhonda Black. I live in Hampton, Georgia. How does this particular, if you passed this tonight, how does this affect some of the issues that are gonna be in the December twenty-first, um, meeting that we were gonna discuss tonight? Where they're wanting to build neighborhoods that have single family homes and townhomes in the same neighborhood?
Mr. GK, you know exactly what you said.
No, this doesn't have any bearing to those cases.
Okay. That I was, 'cause that to me seems like a multi-family situation. Okay, I was just curious.
Okay. Mr. Garber.
I'm not, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia, Madam Clerk. I'm not gonna get into the issue of multifamily against single family. The one statement that I wanna make here loud and clear is protecting the wealth of the people who are already there. That's the main concern. I'm, I, I wanna hold. Not lessening the value of their home, but building their homes up. Everybody moving upward rather than a race to the bottom. Am I clear?
Clear.
All right, thank you very much.
Anybody else?
These are supposed to be in opposition, correct?
Yeah, we in opposition. All right, so is there a motion to approve?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hambrun couldn't get the mask off in time. Any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Do we need an executive session?
Yes, on litigation in real estate.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for litigation in real estate. Is there a second?
I second it.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Everyone have a good night. All right, motion to reconvene.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Take them together, Mr. A.
All right, I've got, uh, first, a settlement agreement with Jacqueline Wilson against Clayton County, Board of Commissioners, Clayton County Police Department and Byron Palmer. Individually in its official capacity, it relates to an accident that occurred on January twentieth, I'm sorry, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, at or near the intersection of Terra Boulevard and North Avenue in Clayton County, um, Georgia in the amount of forty thousand dollars. The next is, um, related to the same accident, but involves Quinte Hollenquest. Uh, the same parties, same accident on Jan, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty at the intersection of Terra Boulevard, North Avenue in Clayton County in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. That was it.
All right, is there a motion? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. A motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, second a motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Good night.